The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Present.
Alderman Odenberg?
Present.
Alderman Cohn? Alderman Norrion?
Here.
Alderman Valmer?
Present.
Alderwoman Velasquez? Alderwoman Sanyay? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning?
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys?
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge? Alderman Cohn? Alderwoman Velasquez? Alderwoman Sanyay?
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge?
Present.
President Green?
Present.
We have ten present.
A quorum being present, we will be led in reflection and prayer by Jose Garza, who is a St. Louis-based artist and board member with the Latinx Art Network for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Is Jose present? I think we still have folks at the flag raising, unfortunately. So we will dispense with line item number three and four. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? If, folks today, since we're in a little bit different format, if you want to be recognized, if you could please just raise your hand so I can make sure that I can see. Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the Board. Today, I'd like to have our legislative assistants as my honored guests. They started since we've come back from recess, so just this, a few months ago? How long's it been? A month? Two months? Thank you all. You're wonderful. We're so lucky to have you. We appreciate everything you do for us. Thanks so much. And you're my honored guest today.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none? Alderwoman from the 10th is not here. So Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Thursday, July 20th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to approve the minutes from January?
Thursday.
Thursday, July 20th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we approve the minutes from Thursday, July 20th, 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda, and has been uploaded into the Google Drive for your review. I have had the pleasure, from the office of the mayor, I have had the pleasure to submit the following individuals to appointment to the Mental Health Board. Janice Thomas, Marcia Hayes Harris, Cassandra Pinkston, Robert Poyer, Vander Corliss, and Terrell Harder.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' reappointment to the Mental Health Board. Alderman from the 9th?
I'm sorry, I-
That's all right. You are recognized on the appointments, to Mayor Jones' appointments to the Mental Health Board. Some of the other folks that were supposed to make nominations are not here. So if you want to make a nomination to send all of them to committee, I think that would be appropriate at this time.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to send the appointees for the Mental Health Board to the Legislative Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we send the mayor's appointments to the Mental Health Board to the Legislation and Rules Committee. Any discussion?
Determined legislation.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
I have had the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the St. Louis Port Authority. Brellian Lilly Seymour.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointments to the St. Louis Port Authority.
Thank you. I would like to move to submit the appointment of both Seymour to the Port Authority to the Legislation and Rules Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we send Mayor Jones' appointment to the Port Authority to the Legislation and Rules Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members, I have had the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District. Thomas Brackman.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District.
Thank you. I move that we submit the nomination to the Waterman Lake Special Business District, Thomas Brackman, to the Legislation and Rules Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we send Mayor Jones' appointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District, to the Legislation and Rules Committee. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th?
Okay. I know I raise heck all the time about the big boards, but this is a smaller board that unless you just want to, should just go through. If you don't, if you really wanted to go to the committee, that's fine. But on the smaller boards, we had agreed that they could just be passed through. So if you're just doing it so that we won't have a ruckus, it won't be one, because it is a smaller one. But it's your choice.
I second that. In that case, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Would the Alderman from the 14th withdraw his second?
I would like to withdraw my second.
Alderman, you may proceed.
I approve the mayor's nomination to the Waterman Lake Special Business-
Second.
-District, Thomas Brackman.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 12th, that we approve the mayor's appointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear honorable members, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment and appointment to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District. Saladin Martinez, Michael Powers, Anne Smart, and Dwayne Nelson.
Alderman from the 3rd, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' reappointments and appointments to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve the mayor's appointments and reappointments to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we approve Mayor Jones' reappointments and appointments to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear honorable members, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment and appointment to the South Grand Community Improvement District. Lorenzo Adrade, Natasha Barami, Rachel Presley, Kayla Pollard, Shai Tran, and Max McCreary.
Alderwoman from the 6th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' reappointments and appointments to the South Grand Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to submit the nomination.
Alderwoman, I need you to speak into the other microphone.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve the reappointment appointment of the mayor's nominees to the South Grand Community Improvement District.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we approve Mayor Jones' reappointments and appointments to the South Grand Community Improvement District. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That is the extent of the report of city officials.
Alderman from the 2nd.
Never mind. Sorry, excuse me.
Not a problem. Please dispense with line item eight. Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Alderwoman from the 6th?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to move bill number 71 from the informal calendar to third read in perfection.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Third reading consent. Does anyone wish to take any further bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any further bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? First reading of board bills.
Board Bill Number 88, introduced by Alderman Cohn, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into the exec and execute on behalf of the city the ground lease and development agreement for Brown Lee and Northern Track Faces 1 and 2 at St. Louis Lambert International Airport between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and the Boeing Company, which attached hereto as attachment 1, are made a part here of containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 89, introduced by Alderman Cohn, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into the and execute on behalf of the city the First Amendment to the concession agreement with Eviteco LLC, which is attached hereto as attachment 1, and made a part here of containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 90, introduced by Alderwoman Velasquez, an ordinance creating the offenses of defacing a firearm and possession of a defaced firearm with penalty provisions. Board Bill Number 91, introduced by Alderman Odenberg, an ordinance creating the municipal offense of unlawful possession, manufacture, transport, repair, or sale of certain weapons with penalty provisions. Board Bill Number 92, introduced by Alderman Odenberg, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle, estrogen, and pedestrian travel in the easternmost east-west alley in City Block 5766 as bounded by Shoal Meyer, Mike Lynn, and Loafboro in the City of St. Louis, Missouri as hereafter described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section I-4 for Article 21 of Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill Number 93, introduced by Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance amending ordinance number 71430 requiring member orientation and member training for the COB and DFOB, allowance of independent legal counsel with certain provisions, and requiring specific entities to appear before the COB and DFOB only when their presence could potentially interfere with criminal or civil proceedings and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 94, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 5600 block of Dewey Avenue and 5700 block of Dewey Avenue. Board Bill Number 95, introduced by Alderwoman Sanyay, an ordinance updating the existing penalty provisions for certain weapons-related offenses that currently are codified in Chapter 15 of the municipal, of the City Municipal Code by amending portions of ordinance number 55516, ordinance number 71104, ordinance number 70502, ordinance number 65483, and ordinance number 59569, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That is the extent of first readings of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation Committee, I'm sorry, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill Number 88 and 89. To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill Number 90, 91, 93, and 95. To the Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee, Board Bill 92 and 91. That is the extent of the reference to committee.
We will dispense with line items 14 through 16B. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill Number 66, 72, 71, and 70, I'm sorry, 75.
Third reading and final, sorry, passage of board bills, consent.
Board Bill Number 9, I'm sorry, Board Bill Number 66, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus, Board Bill Number 72, introduced by Alderman Browning, and Board Bill Number 75, introduced by Alderman Cohn and Alderwoman Sanyay, and Board Bill Number 71.
By Alderwoman Velasquez.
By Alderwoman Velasquez.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized in the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we third read and finally pass the board bill, the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Alderman Norrion?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Velasquez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd? We have 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill Number 66, 72, 75, and 71.
Sorry, that was, I think we have none for the final passage. The report is finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill Number 66, 72, 75, and 71.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law.
Point of order. Just a point of clarification. Board Bill 71 is listed on the informal calendar.
It was moved.
Okay, thank you.
First reading of resolutions in reference to committees.
Resolution Number 74, introduced by President Green, Alderman Valmer, reaffirming city policy for disclosing potential conflict of interest.
Alderman from the 5th, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 74.
Thank you, Madam President. This is simply a resolution we have to file every year to-
Alderman, would you like to request unanimous consent?
I don't really think I want to, no. I'm gonna do this all on my own, you're all out. I request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, Alderman, you may proceed.
All right. This is our, simply our necessary thing to, we have to file every year to let us know that we are not having any conflicts with things. If we are part of the family members in the police department, we can't vote on police department bills, things such as that. So this is our annual filing of the city policy.
Great. Alderman, would you like to make a motion?
I guess so. I have moved that we approve Resolution Number 74.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we approve Resolution Number 74. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 75, introduced by Alderwoman Velasquez, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Norrion, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderman Browning, and Alderwoman Keys, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month.
Alderwoman from the 6th, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 75.
Thank you. I request unanimous consent.
Second.
Hearing no objection, Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Great. Well, we've got a nice little resolution here to honor Hispanic Heritage Month, which begins today. We just came, many of us just came from a special flag raising at the, listed by the mayor's office, but today marks the day that we begin Hispanic Heritage Month. Many of you may wonder, why does it not start at the beginning of the month? Well, because it's actually the beginning of several Independence Days across Latin America, which is why we start on September 15th, which Mexico recognizes as El Grito, which is its Independence Day, which officially starts tomorrow. There are several Latin American countries. That's why it runs from September 15th through October 15th. This resolution, co-sponsored by several of my colleagues, thank you, officially recognizes Hispanic Heritage Month.
Alderwoman, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion-
To adopt.
To adopt this in bank?
Second.
Any, seeing no objection, all those in favor of making Resolution Number 75 in bank, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 1st, that we adopt Resolution Number 75. Any discussion? All those in favor signify-
Um, sorry. Point of order, I don't know if she wants the resolution read or not.
Would you like the resolution read into the record?
Yes, please.
Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 75?
Whereas Hysteric, I'm sorry. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a national celebration to honor the history, culture, and influence of past generations who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, the Central, and South America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month, heritage began as Hispanic Heritage Week and was signed into law in 1968. And whereas in 1988, the commemorative week was expanded to a month starting September 15th through October 15th. And whereas September 15th marks the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas September 16th and September 18th mark the anniversary of independence for Mexico and Chile, respectively. And whereas September 21st marks the anniversary of independence for Belize. And whereas Hispanic and Latino communities have played a pivotal role in shaping the cultural fabric, diversity, and prosperity of the City of St. Louis and the United States, contributing to fields such as arts, music, literature, science, politics, businesses, and many others. And whereas the United States enjoys a deep Hispanic and Latino identity, one in which multiculturalism and diverse perspectives tied in the democracy of the republic form a more perfect union, now therefore be resolved by the Honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberations to hereby proclaim September 15th, 2023, through October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Be it therefore resolved that this, Alderman requests St. Louis City of St., I'm sorry, request St. Louis City Hall fly the Hispanic Heritage Flag designed by Jose Garza from September 25th, 2023, through October 8th, 2023. We is also directed, oh, we also direct the clerk of the board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of the proceedings and to inscribe a commemorative and formal copy to be presented at the time and place and to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced this 15th day of September, 2023, by the Honorable Daniela Velasquez, Alderwoman 6th Ward.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 1st, that we adopt Resolution Number 75. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 76, introduced by Alderwoman Velasquez, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Norrion, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderman Browning, and Alderwoman Keys, adopting the Hispanic Heritage Flag created by the Missouri artist Jose Garza.
Alderwoman from the 6th, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 76.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the Board, I request unanimous consent for Resolution 76.
Second.
Hearing no objection, Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Can we have a reading of the resolution?
Madam Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Whereas the Hispanic Festival, Inc. of St. Louis, Missouri is collaboration with the Regional Arts Commission, Latics Arts Network, and Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of the Metropolitan St. Louis, has unveiled the creation of the Hispanic Heritage Flag for the first time to the local Hispanic community members at the Missouri Historic, I'm sorry, History Museum. And whereas the creation of the Hispanic Heritage Flag was undertaken to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, which spans from September 15th to October 15th, and is a period that commemorates the independence of numerous Latin American countries. And whereas the creation of this flag was entrusted to St. Louis, Missouri artist Jose Garza, who through meticulous work and collaboration with a dedicated committee imbued, imbued the flag with purposeful colors and symbols reflecting values such as preservatives, perseverance- I can't even say it. Perseverance, sacrifice, family, courage, prosperity, and justice. And whereas the Hispanic Heritage Flag includes an eight-point star symbolizing the light that shines the way and the number of symbols in the flag itself. The geometric design embodies the chain of mountains stretching through North and South America connecting Hispanic people. And whereas the colors of the flag include light blue symbolizing water and justice for everyone, brown color representing Hispanic people of color, dark blue symbolizing the sky above, as all the perseverance- perseverance, light orange representing the sacrifices of those who came before us, red representing Hispanic family bonds and courage, orange representing the energy of Hispanic communities, and green representing the earth and prosperity for all. Now therefore be it resolved by this Honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberations to hereby recognize Jose Garza for his outstanding contribution in crafting the Hispanic Heritage Flag, which will serve as a unified symbol of our diverse and vibrant community during Hispanic Heritage Month, and request that Hispanic Heritage Flag be flown at St. Louis City Hall from September 15th, 2023, through October 15th, 2023. We further direct the clerk of the board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of this proceedings to be inscribed, and to inscribe a commemorative and/or a formal copy to be presented at the time and place and to those appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced this 15th day of September 23rd by the Honorable Daniela Velasquez, Alderwoman 6th Ward.
Alderwoman from the 6th, would you like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 76?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt. I just want to show everybody, the flag is now hanging at 13th and Market, but here is a, you can see the five, the eight-pointed star and the blue and everything that the resolution was talking about. And thank you to my colleagues for co-sponsoring it with me. Thank you for, Alderman Aldridge, for letting me borrow his button. Thank you. And I'd like to move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we adopt Resolution Number 76. Is there any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. First, I want to thank the Alderwoman for allowing us to be part of a special moment as our Hispanic community is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. I'll also act so I get my button back, and it looks like it's coming down. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to have this in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we adopt Resolution Number 76 in bank. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we adopt Resolution Number 76. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 77, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, requesting the Missouri General Assembly strengthen the state's circuit breaker property tax credit.
Alderwoman from the 11th, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 77.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I'd like to request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, Alderwoman, you may proceed.
If I could please have the resolution read into record?
Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Get a drink of water first.
Whereas increasing housing values and related property taxes can price older City of St. Louis residents out of the homes they have lived in for decades, separating them from their neighbors and communities. And whereas rising costs can make accessible housing unaffordable to city residents living with disabilities. And whereas recent trends in housing costs and related property taxes make it difficult for older city residents and residents living with disabilities to remain independent in their own- and residents living with disabilities to remain independent in their own homes. Whereas the property tax relief offered by the state of Missouri's circuit breaker property tax credit helps city residents aged 65 and older, and certain city residents living with disabilities who have fixed incomes stay in their homes by offsetting costs related to property taxes. And whereas the circuit breaker property tax credit is a crucial lifeline for city seniors and residents living with disabilities. And whereas data shows that in tax year 2021, in the city of St. Louis, there were 13,237 claims of the circuit breaker property tax credit, 290 of which were from renters, with an average issued credit amount of $639. And whereas the circuit breaker property tax credit has not been adjusted since 2008, meaning its income guidelines and credit amounts have fallen between even the most conservative inflationary estimates. And whereas the circuit breaker property tax credit provides a minimum credit amount of $750 for renters and $1,100 for owners, based upon the amount of property tax or rent paid and total household income. And whereas certainly only very low-income recipients, those with incomes below $14,300, qualify for the maximum amount of the circuit breaker property tax credit. And whereas the circuit breaker property tax credit provides that for renters to be eligible, the income of the single renters can be no more than $27,500, and the income of married renters can be no more than $29,500. And whereas the circuit breaker property tax credit provides that for homeowners to be eligible for the income of single homeowners can be no more than $30,000, and the income of married homeowners can be no more than $34,000. Whereas the recent trends in housing costs and related property taxes make it crucial and necessary for Missouri lawmakers to strengthen the circuit breaker property tax credit. And whereas prior state legislative efforts to strengthen the circuit breaker property tax credit have consistently revealed strong bipartisan support in the Missouri General Assembly, demonstrating that this is a common sense approach that benefits not just the city of St. Louis, but also individuals across the state. And whereas Missouri lawmakers should act swiftly to strengthen the circuit breaker property tax credit by expanding income eligibility, increasing the credit amount, indexing the credit and incoming eligibility amounts to keep pace with inflation, and modifying the phased-out provisions to ensure recipients are reimbursed for a larger portion of their property taxes. Introduced this 15th day of September 23rd by the Honorable Laura Keys.
Alderwoman of the eleventh, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 77.
Well, a lot of great information. And Tracy, I want to thank you so much for reading all of that. That certainly was a mouthful. But this is a help. It's a small help, but it still is help. I don't think enough attention is given to how much our seniors are really suffering and struggling. All across this city, all across the state, we know that people are having financial issues. The price of everything has gone up. And again, this is help. I would ask that we in-bank this. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we make Resolution Number 77 in bank. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board. I appreciate the Alderwoman for bringing this forward. This is a huge problem in our city and state with folks really needing to access more funds. I know we're talking about Senate Bill 190 from the state as well, working on figuring out how to get-
Alderwoman, the discussion is just on the motion to make in bank.
Oh, I am so excited to support this as a group, because we all know how much our seniors in our area need this, and all of us should be supporting it. Thank you. Those are the end of my comments. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion on the motion to make this in bank? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the first, did you want to continue?
I think I said after.
Sounds good. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the eleventh, would you like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 77?
I am very happy to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 77. Thank you.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the eleventh, seconded by Alderman from the fifth, that we adopt Resolution Number 77. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 95, introduced by Alderwoman Sanyay, President Green, Alderman Aldrich, Alderman Browning, and Alderwoman Schweitzer, supporting the registered nurses at St. Louis University Hospital in their campaign for safe staffing and working conditions, and urge SSM to negotiate in good faith.
Alderwoman from the seventh, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 95.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the board. I don't- this is the only- this is the closest mic to me. I don't know if I can be heard through this.
We can hear- can STLTV hear her? You may proceed.
Okay. So, yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, members of the board, for recognizing me on this motion. We all know, especially post-
Would you like to request unanimous consent?
Yes. I would make a motion to request for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
So this, we all know that post-pandemic, our healthcare workers, especially our nurses and our techs, are extremely overworked and are extremely underpaid. We know that there's a shortage of the medical services and mental health services that folks in our communities need. And so, the nurses at SSM, they are going on strike, and they're asking that some of their working conditions be improved, and they are currently in negotiations. So this is just to say that we stand with them as a board, that we urge SSM and St. Louis University Hospital to engage with them in good faith negotiations and to give them the essential conditions and pay that matches with their essential work that they do for our communities every day.
Alderwoman, did you want to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 95?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt Resolutions 95.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt Resolution Number 95. Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Just want to remind people that just a couple of years ago, we were in the middle of a global pandemic, and people were going out on balconies and banging pots and pans together to celebrate healthcare workers, because we realized how important they were when things start to fall apart. And it blows my mind that, you know, 700 days later, we're talking about whether they deserve living wages. And I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this, and I would move that we make this in bank.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, that we make Resolution Number 95 in bank. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
I support the motion. I wanted to speak to the resolution, so I'll wait till-
Okay, let's finish that. Any further discussion on the motion to make in bank? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the twelfth.
I just wanted to add my voice to the support of the SSM nurses. This time last year, I was very, very, very sick. Went to the hospital four times and had four blood transfusions, and spent a couple of weeks in the hospital in October with surgery. And I was in a SSM hospital and treated by the nurses with kindness and care. And I'm not a good patient. I don't know how to be sick. I know how to work real hard, but I do not know how to be sick. And they were patient with me. They were caring. If I could, I would double their salaries tomorrow. I appreciate everything they did. I'm sitting here today because of the nurses and the doctors, and I just really want to thank them. I don't speak out a lot about me being sick, because I don't know how to be sick. But nurses are something that you need. They are away from their families a lot of time. They risk their own health to take care of you. And I would ask the hospital administration to rethink their position and realize how really lucky they are to have caring nurses working for them. And I want to thank the sponsor for sponsoring this resolution.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Again, I'd like to thank Alderwoman Sanyay for introducing this. I am the sibling of two registered nurses, and I can attest to how hard they work and how much their hearts are for the care of people. And I am very excited that SSM, I'm hoping, will do what they need to do to properly take care of the people who take care of us.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, that we adopt Resolution Number 95. Or, did I have the second on that wrong?
Moved by Alderwoman of the seventh.
Oh, seven. Did I say? The Alderwoman from the sixth has been up too much today. So, Alderwoman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, that we adopt Resolution Number 95, seconded by the third. Okay. Can't read my kitchen, my chicken scratch here today. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 99, introduced by Alderman Aldrich, uplifting the St. Louis victims of Cold War secret testing.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 99.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I ask for unanimous consent for Resolution Number 99.
Hearing no objection. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Would the clerk be willing to read the resolution?
Whereas during 1950s, the 1950s and 1960s, as part of the series of Cold War experiments, the United States Army sprayed St. Louis with zinc catamine sulfide, which is potentially dangerous, which is a potentially dangerous chemical. And whereas these Cold War experiments were a part of a COVID series of experiments that concealed from the exposed populations all pertinent factual information regarding the true nature of the operations. And whereas there is substantial evidence that the Army and colluding defense contractors selected marginalized communities, including those residing in the Pruitt-Igoe Housing Complex in the city of St. Louis, and the majority of which residents were African Americans and children under 12, as unwitting persons to use as human guinea pigs. And whereas at Pruitt-Igoe, the United States Army sprayed zinc catamine sulfide with motorized blowers perched atop low-income housing buildings and schools, falsely claiming at the time that the machines were part of a test for smoke screens that could guard against aerial observation by the Russians. And whereas exposure to zinc catamine sulfide may cause devastating side effects such as lung cancer, prostate cancer, death, developmental defects in children, liver damage, kidney damage, calcium deficiency, osteoporosis, osteomalacia, amnesia, loss of sense of smell, reduced sperm count, discoloration of teeth, pulmonary edema, chemical pneumo-
Pneumocystis, I think.
Respiratory failure, emphysema, dyspnea, bronchitis, chronic rhinitis, and decreased birth weight. And whereas, according to the Army documents, one of the compounds that was sprayed on the public in the experiment was given the code FP2266, also known as radium 266, which was manufactured by the U.S. Radium Company, which was widely criticized about, and numerous lawsuits were filed concerning the fact that several of its workers were exposed to dangerous levels of radium 226 in the production of fluorescent paint. U.S. Radium Company was found liable for producing a radioactive powder paint that killed many young women who painted fluorescent watch dials. And whereas, the Army never followed up on the long-term health of the exposure to the spraying. And whereas, the explanation and answers from the federal government and associated defense contractors regarding that occurred and the potential health effects of the covert operations are long overdue for the people of St. Louis and all the communities impacted by the testing. Whereas, a lawsuit was filed in 2012 in the United States District Court of the Eastern District of Missouri by three former residents of Pruitt-Igoe who were involuntary sprayed during these experiments. But despite acknowledging the existence of the covert experiments, the court dismissed the lawsuit and denied the plaintiffs the ability to conduct discovery, ruling that the United States and its defense contractors enjoyed a heightened version of immunity from suit for the aforementioned, I'm sorry, aforementioned, secret experiments and any and all injuries consequences thereof. Introduce this on this 15th day of September 23rd by Alderwoman-
I'm sorry.
Alderman Aldrich.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that resolution. I won't keep it too long. This is a really important resolution. And my ward, there is currently a group of residents right now organizing who have been affected by these chemical agents that were sprayed over their community back in the 60s and 50s and a little bit after that. These chemicals that were sprayed on individuals have had long-term effects on those individuals. And right now, they're organizing to try to uplift and bring back a court case and potentially move forward with potential suing of the state of what happened in the federal government, what they did. I believe this is important for the Board of Aldermen to stand with those residents, and calling on the Board of Aldermen to call on the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to come in to hold monthly town halls to talk about what those impacts have been. And with that, Madam President, I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 99.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we adopt Resolution Number 99. Any further discussion?
No discussion.
Let's go. Alderwoman from the tenth, then the fourth, then the seventh.
All right. I'm definitely going to be asking for this motion to go. I'm sorry, this resolution to be adopted in bank. And I would like to put a little more highlight onto the group that Alderman Aldrich is talking about. This is a very engaged group that meets weekly, a very diverse group of people all across not just our area and our, the affected area, but our state and our region. People have been looking and paying attention to this. There's a documentary on this called Target STL that's been played. It's an award-winning documentary called Target STL that's been played. It's airing now live. They've been on multiple news platforms here lately because of the attention that's been redirected to this. So I thank you, Alderman Aldrich, for bringing this resolution forth. I would like to name them, the group's name is the Pruitt-Igoe Historical Accountability, Compensation, Truth Seeking Group, and it's an acronym they have. They call themselves the Facts Group, and I love that. And so with that, I would again ask that this motion be, I'm sorry, this resolution be passed in bank.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that Resolution Number 99 is made in bank. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I also was going to move to make this in bank, so I appreciate the fact that Alderwoman Clark Hubbard did so. This, when I first read about the fact that this happened, I was just blown away. It's not only a dark chapter in St. Louis history, but it's a dark chapter in United States history. And I agree with the sponsor that we need to, the entirety of the government needs to look at what can happen to make this right, and barring lawsuits based on immunity is just not appropriate here, I don't believe. There's a clear wrong that was done to people who live in the city, some of whom still live in the city. And I think that we need to stand with those folks, and with that, I yield. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I was also going to say that we should pass it in bank, so I'm glad that we did that. I just wanted to thank the sponsor for bringing this forward and really be clear that this is what environmental racism looks like, that these types of things have happened across our city and across our country, and it is usually in black and brown, people of colors communities. And so I just wanted to make sure that I was very clear about that on a- And so, I just wanted to make sure that I was very clear about that on record and lifting it up because, you know, there are things that the government and where government officials have the availability to do. And our city is having a lot of conversations about reparations and other things. And I think sometimes the context of the fact that people have been intentionally targeted, intentionally misinformed, and been honestly betrayed and violated by people who are supposed to be protecting and serving them. So, I just want to go on record and make sure we state that in our yield.
Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. One of the things that I wanted to bring awareness to is that in that same area of Pruitt-Igoe, there were two schools. One was Central Catholic, which was the old St. Bridgetts, which transitioned to be Central Catholic Community School and Carlan. In the early seventies, we were actually in school, in class, while they were dynamiting Pruitt-Igoe. Over the many years, I've had many former classmates who have suffered a tremendous amount of health issues. Two classmates had brain tumors. One died. One still struggles with brain cancer. I talked to a friend this past weekend who now lives in Kansas City. He has plaque on his brain. And I'm sure that there are many other stories that have not been shared, but while we know that this happened directly in Pruitt-Igoe, we have to look at the other areas that were or potentially affected by the things that were done at this site. And I would, as I, the sponsor of this, be able to maybe look into those two schools that have been, and there is, and Carlan is still there. And the old Central Catholic is, I think, I can't think of the name of the school now, but look into that. Because we've heard stories, you know, just among those Catholic school kids about the different health issues that they suffered. And I've oftentimes wondered if it was somehow related to being that close to Pruitt-Igoe, right next door.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we adopt resolution number ninety-nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of resolutions.
Report from the Legislative Committee, the appointment and reappointment to the Zoological Parks Sub-District Commission, Neil Perryman, Dr. Will Ross, and Vincent Bennett.
Alderman from the second, you are recognized on Mayor Jones's appointments of Neil Perryman, Dr. Will Ross, and Vince Bennett to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Subsequent to a discussion and event on Tuesday, September twelfth, in the Legislative Committee, I move to adopt the appointment and reappointment of the mayor's appointees to the zoological-
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the second, seconded by the Alderman from the fourth, that we approve the appointments and reappointments of the mayor to the Zoological Parks Sub-District Commission. Is there any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Yes, Alderman from the second would yield.
The Alderman from the second yields to the Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Yes, I will.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Yes, Alderman. First of all, do you know how many people are on the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission?
I think there's several. There might be north of forty or so that are on sort of the committee, non-voting committee members.
On the sub-commission? I'm sorry, on the sub-district commission, there are forty?
Well, I think total board members, there's forty or more. I can't speak to the sub-district commission itself.
Okay, so, we had the hearing, there was nothing that was submitted about how many are on the sub-district committee there?
No, I think it was the focus of the discussion were on the nominees.
Okay, well, one of the reasons why we want to send, at least I always push to send the nominees to the Legislative Committee, or not necessarily that committee, but whatever committee, is because we have a law that says that when the mayor appoints more than three people, that we have to have geographical representation. And that doesn't mean that we just go and say, well, we like these people. One of the things that need to be is how many the mayor is appointing, and is there geographical representation? Not just race, not just sex, but geographical representation. So, I know personally Dr. Will Ross and Vince Bennett, and I know they don't live in North St. Louis, they don't live north of Page. I don't know Neil Perryman. So, was there any inquiry about seeing if this was a geographical representation to make sure that people from all parts of the city are represented on this board?
Thank you, Alderwoman. There were no specific conversations around geographical representation in discussion of these nominees.
And the reason why is that people say, oh, I like these people. I like them too. They're my, two of them are my friends. I don't like them enough that they should be nominated for, to represent my area where they don't live. I want geographical representation. I think this is a mistake. I will continue to do it. In fact, I'm just about finished with a map to show you where all the nominations. Anything that's reappointed from the Slay administration, I can already tell you with my eyes blinded that he did not appoint people north of Page. So, when you come back in and you keep reappointing these people, you are doing racism. It's a form of racism, and it's a form of exclusion for those of us who live north of Page. We have a right to be represented on these boards and commissions, and it is horrible, horrible, that we keep doing this, and then we play this game, oh, we like these people. And have, okay, good. I like them too. I know them personally. But it is not right to keep doing this. We gotta do our job. If we have a law, we are sworn to uphold the law. And we have a law about boards and commissions that says that they are supposed to be represented all over. But if we keep pushing people through and we're not making sure that North St. Louis, especially those of us who live north of Page, are represented, then that is wrong. So, if you didn't do that, you didn't do your job, and you shouldn't be pushing this through. As I say, I know where Will Ross lives, and I know where Vince Bennett lives. I don't know Neil Perryman. I do know about the boards and commission, because I've been bringing this up for the longest. I want to give a thanks to the former mayor, Lyda Cruz, and she has at least listened to some and start to work on, okay, you're not telling, you're not telling a fib, Sharon, you're not lying. This is not right. But here we go back, just keep reappointing from this mayor, who is like, just like she can't hear, like she's just going to show that she can cram this through and that she not include people from North St. Louis. I want to know how she thinks she's going to get elected in North St. Louis when she keeps leaving people out. All of you, all you don't live there, you don't have to run citywide. But the people who run citywide ought to be listening and hearing that this is not right. So, when I bring my map and we look at how people are appointed, and you see how there's a whole part of city not left out, all of you ought to feel ashamed. You can't come back years later and talk about environmental racism and all this other kind of racism, and you don't talk about what's happening right now, why it's important. If all of you, one part of your town was being left out, you would not think this is fair. And if you don't ask the question, then we might as well just push them through in the first place. The questions have to be answered, and they have to be right and fair. And the first thing should be, how many people are on this Zoological Park Sub-District, and is there fair representation? I have pushed that since I have been on this board, be it for South St. Louis, North St. Louis, or whatever. People hear it when it's their part of town, but they don't hear it when it's not fair in my part of town. And so, then you become part of the problem when you do not hear it. I will be voting no on these people because we do not have any assurance that this is represented fairly, and I can almost guarantee you that it is not. And we have to stop doing this, and we have to make sure that people from all parts of the city, just like we pushed back when I first got here, before there was all this gay rights. I pushed and pushed things for, what do you call the commitments, so that people who were not married, but they were gay, they could have domestic partnerships. And none of you all were here, none of you. And I took a big hit in my community for doing that, but I stood up for it, because what's right is right always. And it doesn't become right whether a black person is doing it wrong or a white person is doing it wrong. This is wrong when we don't include all people. And I have always done that, be it race, sex, orientation, or whatever. That has always been what I have pushed here. And what I am telling you, this is unfair to North St. Louis. So, when you vote for this kind of stuff, you're saying, I don't give a damn about North St. Louis, but I do, because I live there. And I can live any place in this city I want to. And I'm ashamed that we keep doing this. And I'm going to make it louder and louder. And so, if you run it to the committee and you don't ask the right questions, then you're leaving people out. That's like saying, oh, we have an all-white board, and we didn't ask if any of the people were black. Oh, we have an all-male board, and we didn't ask if any of the people were male. We just pushed it through. That is not doing your job, and that is not right. And this should be sent back to committee, and the committee should do their job, and we should not reappoint anybody if we're not sure that people are being fairly represented.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
It doesn't.
No.
So, thank you. I guess my question, because I apologize, I had to leave. What committee is this referred to?
This was referred to the Legislation and Rules Committee. So, what is before us is the report from that committee.
Oh, I'm with, I'm like Ann Schweitzer. Okay, I'm fine. I gotta leave that alone.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman.
Go ahead.
From the second, you are recognized to close.
I renew my motion. Thank you, Madam President.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the second, seconded by the Alderman from the fourth, that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Var.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velasquez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanye?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys? Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
No.
I have twelve aye votes, three no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the second to approve the mayor's appointments to the Zoological Park Sub-District Commission. At this point in time, I move that the meeting of the full Board of Aldermen be closed to the public under the provisions of Section 610.0213 and Section 610.022 of the Missouri Revised Statutes in order to permit the members of the Board to discuss matters related to hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of employees of the Board of Aldermen. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that the Board go into closed session. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman. Alderwoman Velasquez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanye?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Aldridge?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motions. Marshals, please clear the gallery and the floor. And STLTV, please place the full board and close session. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. Any discussion? The mic's not working.
Second.
Can you hear me?
Hello? They're not, yeah. Hello? Testing.
They're good. Okay. It's been moved by the Alderman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, September twentieth, 2023, the HUD Committee will be meeting in the Kennedy Room at 1:00 p.m. Friday, September twenty-second, 2023, full board meeting will be meeting at 1520 Market Second Floor Conference Room, 10:00 a.m. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the sixth.
I would like to recognize my honored guests. Oh, the, I'd like to recognize my sister Venus Velasquez, who is visiting from Seattle, and my partner Byron Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to announce that we're going to have a Transportation and Commerce Committee hearing Monday, September eighteenth at 10:00 a.m. We have a certain piece of legislation before us that needs to be considered fairly quickly, so it's outside of the normal scheduled time, but I appreciate everyone's flexibility.
Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to announce that on Wednesday, September twentieth, we will have a Public Infrastructure and Utilities Meeting virtually at 3:30 p.m.
Point of order.
Please state your point of order.
I have my hand raised to be around Courtesy Resolution, but she didn't look this way to identify me to speak, so I just wanted to make a comment for one of the Courtesy Resolutions.
We are unfortunately past that point, but if you would like to make an announcement related to that, you may do that.
Can I make an announcement to be asked to be added as a co-sponsor to Resolution sixty?
It is unfortunately too late since it has already passed. My apologies. Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the thirteenth. I don't think these mics are working.
It's not working.
Okay.
This is working.
Yes, we can hear you.
I didn't want to, I just wanted us to take a few minutes of silence in regards, we are losing our youth at an astronomical rate. We lost another child at St. Louis Public Schools that went to Sumner High School. On my way here, I heard about a child that had been killed in a car accident. And so, if we could just have a moment of silence for our children to ensure that we put our hands around them and protect them, because this has been a rough year for our youth.
We could all please take a moment of silence? Alderman from the four, or fifth. Sorry, looking at both of you.
No worries. I'd like to now have a legislation meeting, two o'clock Tuesday via Zoom for the Mental Health Board candidates.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder that tonight is Balloon Glow, and tomorrow's the Forest Park Balloon Race. It's always a good time, so if you're looking for something to do either day this weekend, it's free, fun. Have a good time. Thanks.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Two quick announcements. Yesterday, in the fourteenth ward, we experienced another horrific fire. It's kind of the second one that has happened in the last few months. Another one of our beautiful structures in the city of St. Louis caught fire yesterday. It's a major building that is now unfortunately gone due to the fire. But I really want to thank our firefighters, our men and women that work hard. Yesterday's fire was a little unique because there was a power line also in the middle of that fire, which not just knocked out people's power, but put our firefighters, men and women, in a very difficult time to be able to put out that fire. I appreciate all their hard work that they do to ensure to keep our city safe. And second announcement, as well as yesterday, our union brothers and sisters at UAW went on strike. It is important that we continue to advocate for unions and livable wages, and I hope that as I try to coordinate with them and give information out to my colleagues so as to stand in solidarity with them that we do so, because we cannot allow big corporations to take advantage of hardworking men and women that are trying to provide for their family. Thank you, Madam President.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Would also like to announce that there's a Personnel Committee meeting- Would also like to announce that there's a Personnel Committee meeting at three P.M. on Monday, September eighteenth, and Committee of the Whole with the purpose of discussing the process for the RAN settlement funds at six P.M. on September twenty-fifth. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, all members of the president today.
Congratulations. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adjourn until Friday, September twenty-second, at ten A.M. at fifteen-twenty Market, second floor conference room, right here again. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
[laughing][1778.42]